We're recording, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole tonight while go ahead and convene the meeting. We have one item on the agenda, and that's the Housing Action Plan update. And I guess we'll go ahead and hear from Hannah. Are you going to present for us?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Can you one second? Let me set up my screen.
Okay.
I hope you are all able to see that. Thank you and good evening, council members. My name is Hannah Vaughn Miller, in the Housing Programs Manager for the city. I'm very excited to be here with you virtually tonight to discuss the work of the Housing Action Plan. And it's actually a real treat to have your undivided agenda tonight. So my slides will not take up our entire time, so there will be plenty of time for questions. And you can note that most of the slides are numbered down in the bottom left-hand corner if you would like to go back to any of them at the end. So to start, I want to give a background to this work which began in 2019 by legislation which is often called HB 1923, which was passed by the state allocating grant assistance to local governments to undertake actions to increase development capacity. One of those eligible actions is the Housing Action Plan. So in 2019, the city applied for a grant from the Department of Commerce and was awarded $100,000 to complete a plan by June of this year. There are two distinct actions within the Housing Action Plan scope. The first is a subregional framework, which is a coordination effort between South King County cities. And the second is the Renton-specific Housing Action Plan. And the Renton-specific Housing Action Plan has four distinct phases. And our presentation today is going to focus on the work that has been completed, which is our subregional framework and the housing needs assessment for Renton. So to start, I want to ground us in some of the goals of this work. The subregional framework was an effort by South King County cities to pool grant funds to look at South King County housing. The goals are to understand the current and future subregional housing market and household demographics, to evaluate the existing and potential policy impacts on the subregion, and to lay the groundwork for more unified and consistent messaging across South King County cities. The Renton Housing Action Plan aims to build on our past work, both at the subregional framework and the city's past housing efforts. We also look to identify near-term housing strategies to support the upcoming comp plan update and to come away with a unified implementation plan. On this slide, you can see where we are in terms of timeline. We're currently finalizing our policy review and tool options, which was reviewed by our advisory committee in January. And we're currently working to compile recommendations and the draft plan, which will be under review for feedback by both CED staff and our advisory committee this month. Those recommendations will go to the planning commission and then to council this spring. The grant deadline is June, but we are hoping to proceed that. Community engagement has been used to support the planning process throughout all of 2020. Despite having some hiccups from COVID, our main engagement strategies were grounding interviews with key stakeholders, using stipend-based community representatives to have conversations with the community, and having a robust and engaging web presence, which will continue into 2021. Importantly, there is also a 12-person advisory committee of housing and community stakeholders who guide and inform the plan. To date, we've had four meetings, with one more scheduled for later this month. And it's really been a superb group of folks that have really spent a lot of time and commitment in these conversations around housing. So I want to give a big thanks to everyone who participated. So moving on to the bulk of our discussion today, which will focus on housing and households, first at a high level in South King County, and then in more detail in Renton. To start, we can look at South King County households by looking at income and the distribution of it, and how that has shifted over time. So this first bar here shows households by income bracket in 2012, with the lowest-income folks on the left and the highest-income folks on the right. This next bar that you see in the lighter shade of blue, this shows households in 2018. So this chart shows some of the changing demographics in South King County. From 2012 to 2018, we see significant declines of households at the lowest-income levels, the 0% to 30% AMI, and gains of households of those making above 80%. And shifts at the lowest-income brackets are supportive of some of the findings and anecdotes that we often hear about displacement in South King County. Because AMI is a relative measure, it's really unlikely that this shift is due to folks solely having positive economic factors. Rather, it's more indicative of households at these income levels not being able to afford our communities. And I think that this is even more important, given the diversity within South King County and the realities of disproportionate impact in housing. This chart shows income distribution by race and ethnicity in South King County. And we see that folks who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color are overly represented in the 0% to 50% AMI category. Forty percent of Black households in South King County make less than 50% of the area median income, and this is compared to 27% of white households. And we're unable today to go into the myriad of structural and institutional factors that contribute to this disproportionate impact by race. For those who have a Black History Month reading list, The Color of Law by Richard Rossstein is a really powerful book on the role of planning and land use in segregation in the United States. But ultimately, what this disproportionate impact means that when we lose households at 0% to 30%, where folks of color are overly represented. So moving on to housing need in South King County. As part of the subregional framework, our consultants worked to quantify housing needs in South King County and each of the participating cities. This was done both in terms of future need, which is based on our regional population forecast, and our current underproduction, which is the number of units that are needed to meet our past production deficiencies. So you can see the South King County results here for the subregion. There is about 215,000 existing units in the subregion. Our quantified existing deficit was just under 20,000 units, and our future need is 43,400 units. So here, the underproduction, or the units that we need today, is actually nearly a third of our total need. And adding together that underproduction and that future need, that's how many housing units that the South King County subregion should build by 2040, so that all folks have housing at their income level. And that's just over 63,000 units. So in terms of actual units built, you can see here what that, on average, South King County builds 2,150 units a year, and that's an average production rate since 2011. But to meet the need that was defined in the previous slide, the subregion will need to be building 3,155 units on average a year, which is an additional 1,000 units on average, or an increase of 50%. And across King County, South King County, these production needs vary dramatically. You can see here that annual needed production in Renton is 463 units. And similarly, the ability to meet that need is not uniform. So on average, since 2010, Renton has added 430, over 430 new homes. And this is more than any other South King County city. And given our defined need, it's largely on pace with our needed unit production. However, we are not alone in the subregion, and some of our neighbors are not keeping up with the need as well. And to be able to have stable, healthy South King County housing markets, we know that we all need to be succeeding. So I will pause here as we move on to our Renton-specific discussion. Is there any questions or any comments at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't catch who that was. Is that Councilmember McGurven?
It's Ed.
Oh, hi. Councilmember Prince, yes. Please, go ahead.
Hannah, thanks so much. So far, I'm really enjoying what I'm hearing. I have two questions. The first one, on one of your initial slides, you talked about the timeline and the planning commission. Are you, or is there a plan to have input, public input at the planning commission level? That's my first question. And then, if you go back to Slide 12, my
Fully, but surely.
No worries. My question on those 2012 numbers, how much of those numbers were reflective or impacted by the recession?
That's a good question. This is, well, let me answer your first question first. Thank you. The, for the planning commission process, yes, we will be having a public hearing. It is a requirement of the legislation for, for the adoption process. In terms of the data that was used for this number, it is PUMS data, which is microsample data that is pulled from the census. So it would probably have any irregularities that any other data that would have been affected by the recession may have been. I'm not familiar with any impacts that the Census Bureau might have had during that time, but I think that's a good consideration.
Thank you.
Let's see. I saw a hand for Councilmember McGurven.
I actually didn't raise my hand, I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this wrong. Forgive me. Councilmember Benedetti, can I go to Councilmember Benedetti?
Yes, thank you very much. Hannah, this is great. Really terrific information here. Going to Slide 15. What do you think that Renton and Kent are doing right, is the first question. And then, the second question is, if we were looking at, that's, that's total number of units, but it's not looking at the percentage of the AMI that is aimed at. And so that is, my follow-up question is, what percentage roughly of those 438 are meeting something under the 100%?
Great question. Thank you, Councilmember. Speaking to your first question, I think that a lot of factors come into play. To speak to Renton specifically, I think that our production numbers are highly related to, one, just our position in the market as closer to some of the employment centers, but also in doing some of the policy and incentive review across South King County. Renton came ahead in almost all of the policy work. We were the jurisdiction that had incentives in place, that had seen units built, and were generally supportive of pursuing, or planning to pursue, other options. And so I think some of the other jurisdictions have opportunities to kind of grab low-hanging fruit that we, in our jurisdiction, have already acted upon. In terms of Renton, sorry, in terms of Kent, I can't speak to their market specifically, but I do know that some of their future need was impacted by them having the largest household size in the state, because they have a large average household size that played into the number of future units that they were expected to need. But obviously, we know that some of those assumptions can change in, in reality.
Okay. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you. So I have a question with regard to Renton. How much of our average annual new housing at 438 is a product of our zoning and incentives, and how much of it is a product of the Renton Housing Authority as a distinct entity?
Thank you, Councilmember. An apology, Councilmember Benedetti. I only answered your first question and failed to answer your second question. And to both your second question related to what our need is at AMI levels, and to Councilmember O'Halloran's question regarding subsidized housing, some of this will be answered in the second half of the presentation, which will be looking at Renton more specifically.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, thank you. I did think of a question after all. So it's on the same slide, so let's just stay right here. My question, so this relates to 2040 targets. Obviously, as we're looking towards resetting to 2050, I'd be curious, and I'm not asking if produce that out of the spot, but how much that might shift if we're looking at it certainly through kind of that transit reset. I think it could make it worse potentially for some jurisdictions, but that would be kind of what I would be curious to know, is how would we be keeping pace on that kind of reset model once we get those numbers? And is this, I'm assuming this allocated, obviously, is a product of zone capacity and what you're expected to build. I mean, all the jurisdictions would be having to demonstrate adequate zoning to meet that target, right? So...
So to answer your question to the best of my ability, these are some ongoing conversations that are happening with the county right now, and the county-wide planning policy process and growth targets. So the figure that's put before you right now is not necessarily a target, but it's a defined need. So this is the number of units that we need to build to be able to satisfy our existing households today, and to, as we'll see later with the income breakdown, which is on a future slide, and to keep our existing income distribution. So some of the work that's happening at the county is, because it's looking at county-wide need and not necessarily subregional or Renton-specific need, a lot of the numbers for production are much higher. So I think in Planning and Development Committee, there were some initial growth target ranges that were presented. They are, even the lowest number in that range is above the number of needed units in this methodology. So to answer your question more succinctly, we will probably need to be building more to meet those county-wide targets. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. Are we ready to move on to the Renton-specific plan? Sounds like it. Yep, let's go ahead and go to the part two.
Thank you so much. So to start looking at Renton, I want to dive into some more detail into our household composition. And to do that, I want to ground us all in concepts that I'm sure we're very familiar with, but am going to go over very briefly regardless. So the area median income allows us to think about household income along a continuum from lowest to highest incomes. And the center point is the area median income, or AMI. For this methodology, we use King County AMI as a reference area. This allowed us to account for the wider market context. Folks often live and work in different areas. And in 2019, the AMI for the county was $188,600. So this means that 50% of our households made more than that amount, and 50% of households made less. And as we're understanding housing affordability in Renton, we're most interested in looking at those bottom 50% of households, or those who are making under 100% AMI. And when we're looking at households that are under 100% AMI, I really want to continually bring us back to the fact that we're talking about a wide variety of households, wide variety of occupations, and a wide variety of incomes. So this chart here grounds us in some of the incomes that we're talking about by household size when we talk about AMI, and as well as some occupations that you expect to see at those different levels. So when we're thinking about how this applies to Renton, we can understand our households in a similar way. Looking at households in Renton who make over 100% AMI, that's about 44% of our population. And then, looking at households that make under 100% AMI, we can understand them by those different income categories. And we see that 11% of our population makes 80% to 100% AMI, 15 makes 50% to 80% AMI, 14 makes 30% to 50% AMI, and 16% make that 0% to 30% AMI, or the lowest income levels. So adding some more detail and complexity on top of that, of those households, about 54% of households own their own home, and about 46% are renters. You can see in the color differentiations that a greater proportion of the higher-income households are homeowners or are in the top, and a higher proportion of renters at the lower-income levels. Furthermore, about 37% of all Renton households are experiencing cost burden, and that's represented by those yellow homes. And households that are renters and those with lower income levels tend to be the most cost-burdened. And according to this data source, as many as 84% of households earning less than 30% AMI are cost-burdened in Renton. On top of that, we also have folks who are severely cost-burdened, or spending more than 50% of their income on housing. About 2/3 of Renton's lowest-income households are severely cost-burdened. And these cost burdens at this 50% level are really hard to maintain over time. And many households that have these cost burdens are often under pressure to find different housing options, often outside of our community. And bringing it back to a point emphasized earlier, that these housing impacts are not evenly distributed across our community. We see that in our own Renton data that are Black and Hispanic households are much more likely to be severely cost-burdened. And we also see that households of color are much more likely to rent than own. Many of our housing challenges disproportionately affect renters, as well as not being able to access the wealth-building opportunities of homeownership. So transitioning to what this means in terms of our housing need, the, both the work of the subregional framework and our housing needs assessment work to combine data and quantify that need. But it was all compiled into our final housing needs assessment document, which, which is where our work is really presented and analyzed in bulk. It was distilled into five major findings that you can see on the screen here. These provide a high-level overview of what is in the 50-page Housing Needs Assessment report. But we do also have a one-page summary available on the project website, along with the full report for folks who are interested. Today, I am not going to go over each of these very in-depth points, but I really want to focus on what our existing housing stock is and what our future needs are by income. And I think this is very important, because not all income levels require the same, not all income levels of housing require the same amount of support. We see here that investment and work needed to bring on units increases as we get into deeper levels of affordability. And at the lowest-income level, significant government support is required to bring on those units. And for further context, this slide shows the HUD-defined standards of affordability based on our region's AMI and the number of expected occupants in certain housing types. So when we're talking about building for 30% AMI, you know, we're talking about anywhere from $550 a month to $700 a month, depending on the housing type. But I think that these numbers help ground us in really what we're talking about in terms of affordability. So to start, I think it would, it's important to look at what is our, who can, who our current housing stock is affordable to. And the chart that's going to come up here will show units affordable by income and tenure. So this first bar are our rental units. This is our rental housing stock. And you can see that there's a major concentration of units at the 50% to 80% AMI level, with a small available stock at the 0% to 30% and at the 100% over median income level. On top of that is our existing home ownership units by income. This stock is much more evenly distributed over these income brackets. And you might be surprised to see some home ownership stock at the lowest levels. And we're thinking that this has contributed to a combination of mobile homes and maybe some bunkiness in the data. But I think it's important to note here that these are units that are affordable to households. They are not necessarily units occupied by households at that income level. So it means that, you know, a family might be able to rent that home, but it doesn't mean that it is available for them to rent. So down renting and other phenomenon like that aren't necessarily accounted here. As part of the subregional framework, we also looked at naturally occurring affordable housing in Renton. This gets to Councilmember O'Halloran's point before. So this is non-subsidized rental housing, and this data was broken down by bedroom size. And we see that Renton actually has a large number of naturally occurring affordable housing in that 50% to 80% AMI range, mostly two to three bedrooms, and comparatively little naturally occurring affordable housing in other income categories. And this is really notable, because these units are an important source of affordable housing. But because they're unregulated, they're at risk of redevelopment, and may be putting low-income renters at risk of displacement.
Can I interrupt quickly and ask, how do we get the numbers on, on what the rental prices are? Or, yeah, how do we figure that out?
Yes. So this was data that was collected by the consultants for the subregional framework, ECO Northwest. And I apologize, I do believe that this PUMS citation at the bottom is incorrect. This is rental data, I believe, from CoStar, which provides available data for, for purchase. And it often only looks at larger multifamily buildings, so five-plus units. So there might be some information that is missing within, within this data set.
Okay, so like, say duplexes in the Highlands that are privately owned, we might not know the numbers, they might not show up on this.
That is correct. But let me please verify that data source and get some more detail, and I can share that with you, Council President, because I think that is a really good observation.
Okay, thank you.
So I think this slide is a good comparison to the one we saw before. This is a pie chart showing the city's incomes restricted unit by their income limit. And we can see that, looking at the stock, the majority, almost 3/4 of income-restricted housing, is aimed at 60% AMI, with only about 150 units targeted towards those making less than 35% AMI and below. And this is actually a distribution that's reflected in all of South King County and is not unique to Renton. So this slide transition, transitions us from our existing housing stock to our future need. This need is based on the subregional framework methodology for South King County, and includes those underproduction and future need numbers. I'll note that underproduction in Renton was relatively minimal compared to the subregion as a whole. But you will see here that we do need to build at least... But you will see here that we do need to build at least, at least 9,300 units by 2040 in order to meet our future need. It, you can see here that number broken down by income level. So as you kind of digest this graphic, I want to note a couple of things here. I, I mentioned this a little bit before, but this is a need projection and one methodology to quantify the city's need. Different data, different assumptions will lead to different results, such as what's happening at the county. And second, I want to note that this methodology does assume that we will maintain our current household distribution into the future. It's not asking us how we can become more affordable. So overall, this, you know, how much housing we actually build and at what income level is ultimately a policy decision that will inform who will be able to be in our community in the future. So in this sense, I think these numbers serve a very important purpose to give us a benchmark that really is especially meaningful at those lowest income levels. For example, although the num, this is the chart you saw before of our existing units with the new units needed in orange on top. And so although the number of units that we need at 0 to 30% AMI is relatively less than other categories, building those 900 units of housing would mean more than doubling our existing rental supply at the very lowest income levels in the next 20 years. So in that sense, these numbers do pose very real policy questions as we transition into the next steps of our plan. Just referring quickly back to the timeline, we are in the thick of that policy work. We received really meaningful input from our advisory committee last month about how to refine our work into our draft recommendations. And we'll be working with them as well as CED staff in the next month or so to finalize that work. And as mentioned, we plan to bring those draft recommendations to the Planning Commission for public hearing and their recommendation to you all for adoption this spring. And with that, I am happy to answer questions or go back to any slides of interest.
Well, thank you, Hannah, that's very informative. All right, at this point, I'd like to ask council if you have questions or comments. I don't see any hands raised, shout out if, if anybody's up. Council member Benedetti.
Thank you. Hannah, I don't know if my question, my second question was answered. So I'm going to repeat it and you can, you can help me out here. And, and if it was, what I was asking is of the units that are being built now every year, what percentage is being targeted at these particular AMI categories? So if we were to look at, you know, even the last three to five years, what percentage is, so what I'm seeing here is what is needed, but I'm not seeing what is currently being built.
Thank you for pointing out that, that nuance, council member. You are correct that this is looking at what needs to be built in the future. At this time, I don't have what our production has been by, by rental price. But I think that that is information that I could look into or there are possibilities to look at our existing stock by affordability level as well. But let me dig into that information and see if I can get you a more comprehensive response.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, and council member O'Halloran.
Yes, thank you. So following up then on the Renton Housing Authority question, the slide that indicated the extremely low AMI needing much greater government subsidy, is that where we're suggesting that Renton Housing Authority would play a role? Or what's the thinking on that?
I think, um, thank you for following up on that question so I can try and answer it more completely. I think those are really great policy questions that are things that we are still weighing as part of this process right now. And also a policy question that we are really looking to leadership to help us answer and define in our work going forward. The Renton Housing Authority has historically in their new projects aimed at higher income levels. But for example, one of their new projects, their redevelopment of their headquarters, Sunset Gardens, they do actually plan to have multiple units targeted to 0 to 30%. So I think that, that question that you posed is, is the one that has yet to be answered. And I think that multiple partners, including the Renton Housing Authority and other folks who have the capacity to be able to raise money and build units at that very extremely low income level is going to be, have to be part of the strategy.
Thank you very much.
Council member Prince.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hannah, and you may have, you may have answered this and I just missed it. After this goes through its process, this point, are you going to come back to us with recommendations?
Yes, yes, we will be going to you all with recommendations that have already gone through the Planning Commission. And those recommendations are just that. They will not yet start any formal policy changes. Those will still need to be developed and implemented in the CED and city work plans. So there will be necessary actions. And as part of this work, we do plan to include a mapped-out implementation plan that will hopefully give us some timing and goals to shoot for in that work.
And, and my follow-up to that is, when do you, do you have a timetable of when you expect you will be back with those recommendations?
We are, we're originally hoping to come back to you all in April. Our grant deadline is in mid-June, so we will be before you, before that.
Thank you.
Very good. Do, do we have any other questions? Well, good, okay, so I, so first of all, Hannah, I really appreciate the presentation tonight. I appreciate the great work that everybody's done to date on this. I, you know, I, I think I'm probably not alone amongst the council members and, you know, it, it spawns ideas and I definitely want to, I feel like I want to dive in a little bit and get into some of the discussion about how we're going to solve this. At the same time, I think we've got some, some great people working on that. So, so I understand this, this will come back to the council and I, and I, I think it's, I definitely want to recommend that we reschedule it for a committee of the whole meeting and give ourselves lots of time when it does come back. And I guess I'd like to ask maybe from the rest of the council, you know, how you feel, do you, do you want to wait until the, the staff and the Planning Commission have had a chance at it? Or do you want me to reschedule to share more of your ideas first? Or sort of maybe share what you as council members think we should do for the timing?
Mr. President.
Yes, council member Prince.
I, I think it's important that we, what's the word I'm looking for? That we don't, that we allow the public to have the input that we need them to have. So that it's not, so that I, I can't find the word I'm looking for. So that it's not, well, this is what council says they are looking for. And then it, public opinion is shaped by what they think that's going to be palatable to us. You know, I think it's important that we allow, this is a huge, hugely important issue. Important that we allow the public to have its crack at it and then it comes back to us after it's gone through its process.
Great. I, I see head nods, I think other council members agree with you, so. Council member Benedetti.
Yeah, I'm going to concur with council member Prince. I think that the advisory committee that was, was formed for this was formed very intentionally to have a wide variety of perspectives and viewpoints that aren't necessarily represented here on the dais. And I think that it would be great to have them fully complete their process and then we have an opportunity to, to ring in afterwards. Because, you know, it, it really is, it, it, let's, let's stick with the process. It was designed to be.
Yeah, sounds good. Good, oh, and council member Halloran.
Yes, I just want to, I, I also agree with council member Prince and council member Benedetti, both of whom come from that very public Planning Commission process, so. Thank you.
Hannah, did you have? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Hannah, and then I want to get to council member Perez afterwards.
Council member Perez, please proceed.
Thank you, Hannah. I was just going to ask you, um, when you want to open for public comments, how are you going to reach the community so we have a full participation? You know, that is very inclusive and geographically, everybody, you know, participates, including people that probably normally do not participate in this kind of process.
Thank you for that question, and it leads right into my next comment, which was going to talk about some of the resources that are available on our website and encourage the council members as they're able to share with the folks that you're engaged with in the community. Part of the Housing Needs Assessment presentation that you saw today is available in a video format on the website that you're able to share, as well as a shorter video on the Housing Action Plan just in general. So I please encourage you all to share that resource. In addition, we'll be asking our advisory committee members to do the same. During 2020, we were able to engage with both the senior advisory committee, the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, as well as some other community representatives who are able to help us in that work. So re-engaging with them and inviting them to come as the final step in the process will also be part of our conclusion to bring it all together. But if you have further suggestions, council member Perez, I would be happy to hear them and incorporate them.
I don't have the time, but I, I will reach to you if I have.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we adjourn? All right, well, a great informative meeting. I'm glad we scheduled a little bit of time to go over this topic. It was, it was deserving of the dedicated time. Okay, so with that, I'll formally adjourn the committee of the whole and we'll reconvene as a council in about 18 minutes. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.